All right, so we will call to order the City Council Business Meeting for Thursday, August 6th. It is 6:02 PM. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester, Baker.
Here.
Reba.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston. Mayor Tom Phillips.
I am here as well. We do have a quorum, so we will move on. And we'll just note whatever time anybody else comes in. So this meeting of the Norwalk City Council on August 6, 2020 is being held electronically. Governor Reynolds issued a state of public health disaster effective June 10, 2020 that removes limits on gathering, but physical distancing limits still are in place. I issued a proclamation of emergency effective May 15, 2020, that opened up our public buildings, but due to limits on physical distancing, it is right now impossible to hold this meeting of the City Council in person at City Hall. Therefore, this meeting will be conducted electronically. However, you'll notice that there are a few of us in council chambers tonight. We've added some technology that will help with returning council meetings to City Hall. We're going to see how it goes tonight, and we may open it up for more participants at the next meeting. As with all electronic meetings, there may be some technical glitches, and we may talk over each other, and there could be a bunch of other issues that occur during our meeting tonight. I just ask that we all be patient and respectful with each other as we conduct this meeting. For those on the Zoom meeting, you'll notice that your microphones are muted, and that you probably can't unmute your mic. If you want to speak to an agenda item, please let us know when that item comes up, and we'll unmute your microphone during public comment. You'll notice that you needed to be allowed into the meeting tonight. If you are disruptive, we'll give you a warning. If you're still disruptive after that, we'll remove you from this meeting and not allow you back in. This is what would really happen at an in-person meeting, so it really isn't a change to our procedures. We are streaming this meeting through YouTube. We believe YouTube provides the ability for a much broader audience to view our meetings, since you don't need an account as you do on Facebook. The ability to comment to the YouTube meeting has been turned off, so we don't have a meeting going on within the meeting. We are recording this meeting, so please act accordingly. Finally, I'm only human, and I may misrecognizing someone, especially with the changes we've implemented recently. If that happens, please interrupt me via the chat box. I will not be offended at all if you do. So, our next item is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, I got three motions and one second. All those in favor, aye.
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 All opposed, same. That motion carries. Item 3 is welcome of guests and public comment. If you want to go ahead and let people unmute. We'll have public comment for non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. We can't take action on these tonight since they aren't on the agenda. We've allowed you for this portion to unmute your microphone if you want to, and to public comment if you'd like to address council. If you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. Any takers? Hearing none, we will move on. Item 4 is approve the July 16, 2020 minutes of the regular City Council meeting. Anybody have any changes? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
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 All those opposed, same. That motion carries. Item 5 is consent agenda. Have expenditures, tax abatements, new Class E liquor license, a Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, and Sunday sales for Casey's General Store, number 2568, at 1510 Sunset Drive for 10-1, 2020 through 9-30, 2021. We have a neighborhood block party application, 1,400 to 1,700 block of Park Hill, for August 16, 2020, from 5 to 9 PM. We have a new liquor license addition, outdoor service privilege at 804 Main, for 8-1, 2020 to 12-19, 2020. We have resolution approving pay estimate number 3 to concrete professionals for Main Street and North Avenue intersection improvements project. We have resolution ordering construction of Macanet Sports Complex, East Parking Lot Improvements Project, approving preliminary plans, and fixing a date for hearing there on September 3, 2020, and taking up bids therefore. We have a resolution approving renewal of 28E agreement for the Safety Coalition of Central Iowa Shared Services Agreement, and we have a resolution approving change in job classification for the city's fire captain from non-exempt to exempt. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
And I don't think Jackie's on yet.
Okay, so shall we delay this next one since... To the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we are going to delay the next one until the end of the meeting, see if Jackie shows up. Item 7 then is consideration resolution approving the preliminary plat of Shadow Creek Estates. And I'll go ahead and...
I believe 7 is Timber Ridge.
Is 7 Timber Ridge?
No, Shadow Creek's first. Shadow Creek's first.
Well, I thought we were skipping that, you said.
No, we skipped 6.
Okay, 6 is...
I think you grabbed an older agenda.
There's a new agenda.
Got it, got it. I pulled up the wrong one. Thank you very much.
I did the same thing.
All right.
Let me find you. I bet you we're in agreement now.
Okay, good deal.
Sorry.
No problem. So, this is consideration resolution approving the preliminary plat of Shadow Creek Estates. So this is the development for Signature Companies. It's south of Beardsley. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this. Brian, any discussion from P&amp;Z that you'd like to highlight on this one?
I don't believe we had any extra discussion on this. I can't recall.
Okay. Good.
Anything in particular?
Anything to add?
No, Elliot is on here, so he may have something additional.
Elliot, you got anything to add?
Nothing special. Just wanted to point out real quick a couple things. I sent out that email a little later today, kind of the... On that map with the red and blue lines, just show where the outline was going to go relative to our future trails plan, and just highlight that we're getting a pretty significant eight-foot trail in this preliminary plat on some of the right-of-way that pretty closely matches that red line for a good amount of space. So, proud of that, and happy the developers are able to work with us on getting that trail put in there. Other thing I'd point out, we've got the first two... The first two portions of this under review right now in our department. So, the townhome piece is going to be plat 2, and then plat 1 is the initial single-family residential phase. So, those are under review by myself and Wayne and others. So, that's a thing that's in progress, and yeah, nothing really else to add. I can answer any questions anyone has.
Okay, any discussion or comments from council? Any public comment? And for public comment, if you want to comment, raise your hand, and we'll try to recognize you. Electronically raise your hand. All right, hearing none, we will move on.
We need a motion.
Yeah, so...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Thank you. So, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second then.
All right, so I got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item number 8 is consideration resolution approving the preliminary plat of Timber Ridge. So this is the area just to the east of Silverado Estates that we just rezoned. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Again, Brian, any discussion from P&amp;Z that you'd like to highlight?
No, I think this went along pretty well as well.
Great, good. Elliot?
Not a lot of discussion.
Oh, okay.
Not a lot of discussion. Yep, good.
Anything you'd like to add, Elliot?
Only thing that I would add to this is there's two copies of page number 5 on here. The second one is the most current. It's just an adjustment to the landscape buffer on the G14 side of the development. One of the reasons that got resubmitted is because the number of plantings had to increase because the buffer width is a little bit narrower. But the guys over at CDA were able to make that happen, so we do have an adequate buffer for that northern boundary. That's about the only update I've got on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or comments from council? Questions? Hearing none, do we have any public comment? By raising their hand.
That's what I'm looking at here. I don't... Not that jumps out at me.
All right.
And I'm watching my text messages to see if any of the residents could have my number or texting, and I don't see anything.
All right. Can I get a motion then?
Motion.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. I was waiting for one more name.
I know. It's weird.
All right. Item 9 is consideration of a resolution approving amendment to development agreement with Signature Companies for the Beardsley Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. So this agreement will allow Signature to extend the new sewer another 770 feet to the south. I think it looks advantageous for Signature to get that done, and it is for sure advantageous for the city to get that sewer line extended to the back of their property as well. Luke or Wayne, do you have anything to add? We'll have to unmute Wayne.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Super. Any questions or discussion from council?
Mayor, I'm going to... Sorry, no, go ahead.
Beth, you're good?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 10 is remove from table the consideration of the first reading of an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 176, subdivision regulations of the municipal code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa. So on June 18, council tabled the discussion and consideration of changes to our subdivision regulations. The date was specified in the motion to bring it back was tonight, so we're bringing it back to bring it off the table so we can discuss it and get an update. So can I get a motion to remove it from the table?
Motion.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. So item 11 is consideration of the first reading of an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 176 subdivision regulations of the municipal code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa, and staff request that the item be further tabled. So this is an item we just brought off the table. Staff needs some additional time to work through some items on it. So staff is asking to table this item again with no date. Is that correct?
That is correct. I have an update further if you'd like it. Otherwise, we can give you the full update at the next council meeting when this comes forward.
Let's hear it.
Okay.
Yeah.
City staff has made progress finalizing the details of the pending items for the subdivision ordinance. Those items include street design, specifically subbase and subdrain requirements, traffic study requirements, upsizing water sewer and storm sewer to accommodate adjacent development, pavement of adjacent granular surface streets, and parkland dedication. We have had numerous meetings with the HPA, which is the Home Builders Association, some of our local and metro developers, and region engineers. We have been through a half dozen versions of the final language. We have a few minor adjustments in the final reviews, and we will be ready for council consideration. Staff recommends tabling this item via a simple motion to table without a date, as the mayor mentioned. They're confident that we will have that final version within just the next few weeks.
Okay.
I move to table.
A second.
Motion and a second to move to table. Any further discussion? Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 12, consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 177, rates and fees for updated water and sewer capital charges. So we had the first reading of this ordinance at our last meeting. This change is to adjust rates paid by a developer during subdivision or when a building permit is issued. This extends our current rates to 2029, and then establishes an automatic increase after that. Wayne, do you got anything else to add to that one?
All sir.
All right. Questions from council? Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
And a second.
Second.
All right. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of the final reading of an ordinance amending Sections 1504 and 1706 of the Norwalk City Code addressing compensation for the mayor and city council. So we had a second reading of this ordinance at our last meeting. This change increases pay for mayor and city council. It will be effective for all elected officials at the next election, which will be in November of 2021. Luke, anything final to add to this one?
No.
Okay, any discussion or comments from council? Any public comment? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 14 is the discussion and possible action regarding potential delay in land and water conservation fund grant dollars for the Great Western Trail connection. Luke, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet were a series of options and an explanation behind this delay. If there are specific questions and you want me to go into more detail, I will, but we'll just stop at saying that there was a delay created at the federal level of our $125,000 grant. There are a few options that we've put forth that were also contained in that agenda statement. There are two options that involve the city continuing to move forward. So I'm just going to jump to those options, assuming that this has been a high priority of council, and you do want to move the project forward as quickly as possible. One option would be to split the current project into either two phases or two separately bid projects. And I will let you know that Justin Ernst, thank you, Justin, for being willing to be a part of this meeting. He is a participant, so if you have questions for him, he's available. So one option is to split our project in two, just say approximately at that corner of 50th and Beardsley, so we could proceed with the first phase this fall, and then the second phase next spring, hopefully after the tribal nations have had a chance to review and authorize the project so that we can receive that $125,000 grant. Now, there is some potential cost to that. When you divide a project in two, you have some additional engineering and some additional mobilization costs. There is always a cost of just coming up with cost estimates, so I'm going to say that based on some information that Robin and Justin put together, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $90,000 of additional cost. And that has to do primarily with mobilizing for two projects as opposed to just one. The other option would be to fast-forward a portion of Priority 2, and this is Priority 2 in our Master Greenways Plan. So the section that would extend from the bridge on Beardsley east to approximately Lexington, I believe.
Do you want to scroll up or something to the...
Yeah, I was unable to call this resolution up off of the agenda, so this is the first I've seen it. I didn't get to read any of it.
Brian, would you like me to go through more detail about the reason for the delay or why this even came up?
Well, I just, if we're not going to take action on it tonight, I'm just, I don't know much about any of this, except for it is a priority to get the trails going, that I know. But I don't know how long this is, or if it's just these two pages, or if it's 15 pages long, I don't know.
Does anybody have a problem getting it?
What's that?
Did everyone have a problem with that link?
No, I didn't.
Okay, maybe it was just the app. I'm even trying it now, and I can't pull it up, so I have no idea. Why?
Maybe it has something to do with the way these images came across.
I don't know.
The general concept is there's an issue at the legislative level where if we move forward with the project immediately as it has currently been planned, we potentially forego a $125,000 grant. Knowing that we don't want to do that, we've communicated with the DNR that is managing the grant, and we've come up with a few options of what they believe would allow us to proceed, but there's some caveats. One option is to divide the project in two. Another option is to simply add to the project and then use the grant dollars towards this, let's call it a third phase of the project. That third phase shows up on this map, and I'll see if I can highlight it. The third phase, so there's a bridge right here. Okay? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Nope, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, I don't remember a bridge being there.
Sorry, you're right. There is not a bridge there. Go down further. Somebody already told me. Here, okay.
There you go.
Okay. So it would be advancing the project that at one point in time the end of our current project terminates approximately at this location. So it's just east of the bridge along Beardsley. So what we would do is we would simply expand the project to now include this section of trail. And then we would use the $125,000 towards this project. If we do that, the idea is that our current project, then, the costs should not change, but now we would be incurring additional cost for another phase. Now, this is Priority Project Number 4, so you would be advancing that sooner than some other projects potentially. And there's been an estimate from the engineers that this is about a $300,000 to $325,000 project.
I would add the reason, in case it's not clear, why you would advance Priority Project 4 over the other two is because this is a project that directly ties to the Great Western Trail, and that grant is tied to the Great Western Trail. So that's why we had to pick Priority Project 4, that little segment, so that we would still have the ability to use the grant money.
Okay, so the grant then follows the access to the Great Western Trail, basically, right?
Say that again, Ed.
The grant must follow the purpose of access to the Great Western Trail, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think all this aligns with our priorities that we've set very well.
So... There are some other options in there, like do nothing, forget about the grant, or delay the whole project and wait until we get approval. So it's not just those two options. We just felt like, based on priorities, that was around, one of those are kind of the top. So when we did this agenda statement, and I think the copy that you received, I took a stab at the funding, an explanation of where the funding would come from, and I'm specifically looking at these two sentences that I just highlighted. I took a stab at it and said, hey, there are some other projects that would be delayed, and we would use those funds. I highlighted it, knowing that that wasn't necessarily factual, sent it to Jean and said, hey, would you update this? Well, I apologize, but she updated it very quickly, but I did not get that sent off to Lindsey in time for it to go out with the packet. So this is what Jean has explained of how we would cover either one of those options 2 or Option 4.
So Jean wrote the highlighted sentence that we're seeing? Is that what she said? Okay.
Which means it's correct, as opposed to what I wrote.
That was my next question.
I'd probably look at Option 4 myself. I think, you know, we'd still make use of the grant in the long run, hopefully, but the furtherance of our project is access to the Great Western Trail. I mean, that's the one priority on trails, I think, if I remember right. So that would seem to me to be the way to go. When this comes back to us again, we'll have further consideration of the cost and sources of funding, right? Probably more...
Can you scroll up so I can read the recommendation?
Luke, I think Jean wants to talk.
Oh. I got it.
Hi, I don't necessarily need to talk, but I thought if you had asked me a question, I could not unmute my computer until the host allowed me to. So I just wanted to be available in case there were other questions on the financing.
Thank you, Jean. Robin also discussed this at a recent Park Commission meeting, and again, the statement that I wrote in there about that some other projects might be delayed, I think that caused some consternation with the Park Commission, thinking it might be other trails projects that would be delayed. So I think that the clarification that Jean gave, that it doesn't have anything to do with those other projects, may take care of some of their concerns. And I'm looking at Stephanie, because I know you're the liaison. You were there at that meeting.
Right.
What are the projects 2 and 3 that we would be delaying in particular, or some examples of?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What are some examples of projects 2 and 3 that would be delayed?
I don't think 2 and 3 would be delayed. Only Project 1 would be delayed.
Well, as it says, however, advancing Priority Project 4 would prolong the timeline for projects 2 and 3.
It could. It could delay those projects. Ultimately, Project Priority 2 and Project 3 are both in our CIP, but they are not funded right now. Ultimately, that becomes a decision of council of when and how you want to do those projects.
I believe that the projects that were to be delayed were not parks projects. There were other city projects that were delayed due to COVID, due to something else not happening. That's where the money was from. So it's not delaying part of a, you know, Priority Project 2 or 3. It was actually something else in the city that made that money available. And I think that's probably a question for Jean, correct, Jean? Do you have to unmute her?
Okay, I'm good. That is correct. You're absolutely correct. There's no other project in our CIP that's being delayed due to the... This will not be affected by any other projects and no other... This will not be affected by any other projects and no other projects will be affected. 125,000 is the only issue. And again, we could use reserves if we needed to.
But now you keep you you say 125, but the city has to come up with 200,000. Because the 325,000 dollar project, the grant is 125, so we're really looking at 200,000 from cash reserves, aren't we?
No, actually, my well, my thought would be 125 from cash reserves if we do not get the grant. The addition of 200,000. Yes, if we had to use cash before we did the next round of bonds, we could. But I might need to replenish it when we do the 2022 bonds as planned.
Okay, I see what you're saying, sorry. I want to control the screen, I can't.
I also, it's important for me to note that even, let's say that council says option four, that's what we want to do, and you make a motion to direct us as such. We're going to work with Justin and the DNR to amend our grant. It's entirely possible that the powers that be come back and say, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. So this is allowing us to try to move in that direction.
Could you scroll back up to the alternatives, please? Okay. So I don't know if Robin was going to pitch in on this, but at the Parks Commission meeting last night, they were in favor on number four. They first asked about what the additional cost would be if you did two projects versus one, which was option three. And it came back, I thought it was 90,000, not between 50 and 90, but well, still, it's at least a $50,000 cost, possibly $90,000 cost, so almost as much as the grant to split into two projects. Unanimously, they were not in favor of delaying it. And so they they were coming down to number four. There was also a lot of discussion about putting one priority over the other. But again, it came down to it had to be a Great Western Trail connection in order to qualify for the grant money. And I believe that there were some preliminary conversations anyway with the land conservation, the DNR about this, and it seemed like that would be fine. But, you know, they're not going to promise anything because they still need to go through those approvals.
Right. Hmm, isn't isn't the trail along Beardsley and 50th, aren't isn't that already being split up into two different projects? Tell you what, just we might see if, can you unmute Justin?
He is.
Yeah.
Justin, do you?
I am. Yep, so yes, the project is split into two different pre- phases, but most of so all of 50th is one and one project and part most of Beardsley is connected with the 50th Street. The separate project is the bridge project and connecting to Clearwater, because that has federal funds to it. So that is going through, has to go through a whole DOT review process. So that gets dragged till bidding till next summer anyway. So yes, there are technically two projects already. In this instance, where they say splitting it up into two, it technically be three projects at the end, if you want that route.
Right, so so which one's the first one? What are we doing first?
The 50th and most of Beardsley would be first.
Well, but that's split up into two, right?
If you decide to go that way, but then there's that other project that's already planned to be bit separate on Beardsley, which includes the bridge and the connection to Clearwater right there.
So right now, the L is one phase, the bridge is the second phase. This option would make the Beardsley L be two phases, and then you still have the bridge phase.
Okay, so the L the L is in one whole big chunk.
Yes.
Right.
Oh, I thought we had two chunks, but that's fine. I if we if we can get it done on one chunk, that's great. Uh, okay.
And and then I just want to remind everybody, Justin had mentioned the federal dollars there on the bridge portion on Beardsley that'll cross over that inlet there for Lake Colchester. We cannot combine the two grants. We've already tried that one, and the National Park Service has denied us using land water conservation funds in conjunction with MPO DOT dollars.
Okay.
Well, with those, assuming that those grants and everything happen, would those both those projects be constructed in the same construction season?
I think the L is first and then the and then the L is first in one season and then the rest of it, the 325,000 would be a second season.
So we're looking at a a project that could last for two years, basically, right?
Yeah.
It'll it'll, well, the the fiscal year it's jumping over is in July, though, right? So it would still be done by fall of next year. We just had to get over the MPO fiscal year, moving it into a different fiscal year for their grant.
Okay, so the same calendar year. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess I I like that, and I would tend to look in that direction. You know.
Yeah, what Luke's what Luke's putting up there now is so the the red line is what we are, we want to do now. The pink line is project four, which is what we want to add. Yes. And then the green line will come in at some point in time. It's already planned.
It's that's the that's the second phase. It's already planned, that's where the MPO money is going.
Okay.
And there was the problem, because the LCWF, the the DNR money cannot be used with MPO money on the same project.
Okay.
That's what started this.
Okay.
We've learned a lot about working with different grant entities.
All right, okay. And Robin made it, that is a good point that she brought up, that it couldn't be used that way.
Okay, so four is the fastest way to get all of this done and the most expedient as far as or efficient with money?
And be, yes.
Yes.
I think you're right.
That's all I want to know.
Yes. The agenda item says it's possible action. Could we take action on this? I mean, I don't know when the bids were due to go out, but if we delay it much longer, I don't know how that's going to impact getting the bids.
I'll make a motion.
I would entertain a motion to accept item four on for the.
Okay, Brian, is that the motion you just made?
Yes, that is what I want.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? Any hands raised? So Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Uh, Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Okay, we're getting down there.
On that last item there that you delayed, the city attorney assures me I can vote on that.
You can vote on it?
Yep, he told me that because I had no financial benefit, I didn't need to abstain.
Okay, so let's go back to item number six. And that's a consideration of resolution appointing Brandy Went, Madeline Pavlik, and Adam Thorson to the Park and Rec Board, and Nikki Hutter to the Library Board. So these are normal appointments to the Park and Rec Board and to the Library Board. What we did was we removed it from the consent agenda, because at that we have we have a council member that has a family member that's being appointed, and so there we moved it to the regular agenda.
Okay.
So any discussion?
Other than the fact that I appreciate I'll get to vote for the appointment.
All right, so can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes, cool.
Yeah.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, item 15 is council inquiries and staff updates. Do you have an update on Bravo's fiscal year 21 operating budget? Who had that? No, it was just information. Okay, so that's that's done then. Okay, so go around the room. Let's see, Jim, hang on.
I'm unmuted now.
Nothing?
Nope, I have nothing.
All right, great. Dave and Jackie's gone, Ed?
No, I have nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Uh, Elliot. Is Elliot Elliot still there? Where's Elliot at?
Nothing to report, friends.
What's that?
Nothing to report.
All right, good deal. Wayne?
A couple items tonight. Hopefully, y'all saw Man and North intersection has opened up. They have some remaining work to do, but we can get traffic through. The decorative light poles have been ordered, they should be shipping tomorrow. So hopefully, they get in soon and get installed. The second phase of the Western feeder water main is out to bid. Bids are due at the end of the month. Some of you are familiar with HomeServe, our utility service line program we offer to residents. The next publication is going out toward the end of the month, so just want to make you aware of that. I think a lot of questions come up when we send or when those get sent out. At the last meeting, we discussed Golden Valley Drive. Somebody questioned where that project rebuild was in the NCIS. I went back and went through that program or that study. They don't give a timeframe in that study, but they had a prioritization of projects. And Golden Valley would be the next one on the list for attention. So I think that works out well with the path we're going down. We'll have Golden Valley this fall, we'll create a CIP item for reconstruction for that. Last thing I want to mention is last year, the DOT had a contractor come through and drive all the streets in Norwalk. And they use some a van with a bunch of equipment on there to analyze their roads. And they make this payment condition index, a PCI number. Using that PCI data, Certbo created a report showing the condition of Norwalk roads, compared it with our budgeting, and it was a pretty informative report. It has some good news, some bad news, but just want to make you aware, they did get us some data that we're going to use again this fall to tool we can use in forecasting out projects. And that is all I had.
All right, good to know you're forward. Uh, let's see, Chief Staples?
Hi, we had Front Porch Norwalk on Tuesday, the last room of the year. The number of residents signed up were down. I think that's partially because of COVID and also because the event in July was only three weeks earlier. Either way, we went around and visited with people. So we look forward to next year with having the events without the virus to worry about. And then good news is that Officers Alcorn and Slagel, our newest two, are about done their field training. Probably around the first of September-ish, they will be on the road, fully trained and certified, and we will be fully staffed at 19 officers for the first time. So that's exciting for us, and I appreciate the council's willingness to provide the funding to be able to do that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Jean Furler?
Hi, good evening, just a few quick things. Been a busy week with the auditors in the House, but going well. I want to thank all the staff and the administration office for gathering information and answering questions related to their specific responsibilities. First, there's always a toughest with the a new auditor, but again, I think going well. And then just another item out on the website, trying to make it easier to review our city financial documents. Councilmember Reba had suggested this several months ago before the pandemic hit, but so now I'm just getting to that. Shelby's helping me, I want to thank her for that. So it's in process right now. And my thought is to put the most recent three years out of our budget, our annual financial report or debt report, capital improvement and audits. So give me a couple more days, and if you want to take a look at it, or actually go ahead and look at it now, and if you think of anything that you would like to see, please let me know. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Holly? Holly sent me a text and said she's having some technical difficulties, and she said you can skip her. Okay. Or Mayor, if you want to give any updates from the economic development meeting during your update, could do that. There you have it. You got anything, Shelby? Okay, Jean Bosch?
Good evening, the library is pleased to be picking up a little bit as far as foot traffic, since we have reopened. We have been working to get some more online and digital offerings. So we did just start a pilot of a free download and streaming music service called Freegal. So you can look for information on that. And we are hopefully this month going to be rolling out a new website that will also feature an online reference chat box and another service separate from the website but that will be available on there that provides online homework help, which will help students and especially parents. So we're trying to help out and be better digitally ready for going back to school.
All right, thank you. Robin?
Um, not much, the wrapping up the season at the pool. A lot of staff are starting with fall sports. So kind of pushing pushing the schedule around a little bit, really trying to make sure it works through the end of the season. Other than that, this is the last weekend for tournaments at the complex. Tomorrow, all day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, we'll have a tournament out there, September 1st. We will have Iowa Cubs out there to do field maintenance for the end of the season, get things ready for next year. And then, as you guys voted on earlier, hopefully then September 7th, we can start construction on the gravel parking lot in our parks. Dakota is starting the tree inventory, and he should have that done by the end of the year. And that'll just help us have a better understanding of what we've got in our park system and help us to start adding and replacing where needed. We've installed a lot of dog waste stations, thanks to Deanna and Hometown Pride for helping helping us fund those. They they received a donation for half of those, and then we paid for the other half, and we got most of those installed. Um, the gap portion of the trail between City State Bank and Elizabeth Holland Park is has been poured and is done. And we are installing two, one bench, a Kuanis bench on the west side of Elizabeth Holland Trail, on which they donated several years ago. And then we also have a really cool bench swing, which has been is a private donor. And that will also be going in along the west side of the trail more towards the north, the North Pond, which will be really cool there on the west side. And other than that, I think that's we have a lot of stuff going on, but that is that's the big stuff.
Cool, thank you. Lindsay?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Stephanie?
Uh, one thing that that Robin didn't mention, that she talked about at the Parks Meeting, which is important to us as a city, is that the Great American Outdoors Act was passed by Congress. It still needs to be signed by President Trump, but the importance of that is that it permanently fully funds the Land Water Conservation Fund, which is the source of money for parks, trails, boat launches, sports fields, and other recreational areas and parks. And it was funded with $900 million that will be coming from offshore oil and gas revenues annually. So it's not taxpayer dollars, it's coming from oil and gas revenues. So I thought that was interesting, but but it's it's finally permanent funding. You don't have to scrabble for it every year.
Good.
Until the next administration, probably.
All right, tell somebody else this, no, we're not going to do that anymore.
Nothing else.
All right, thank you. Brian?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Luke? I apologize, I have a few things. First, we realized there are some COVID funds that are going to be coming from the state of Iowa, specifically for emergency services and a certain percent of wages for emergency services as a as a reimbursement from the state. And also, they have talked about helping to offset our cost share portion of the FEMA dollars. It's that's a match funds that come from FEMA. I think they cover 85%. percent, and we're responsible for the remaining fifteen. So anyway, we're keeping our eye out on on those funds. That's great. At my Rotary meeting the other day, I was we listened to DT McGee give an update about the fluid status of back to school plans. The main reason I bring that up is just to keep the school officials in your thoughts. Certainly, this is not an easy process for them. So kudos to them for all the hard work that they're putting into it. We're going to be working on our strategic planning with our department heads, and Monty is the person that came Monty did the strategic visioning for council, ended up with our purpose statement. Then there was the idea that we would roll that down to our department heads. So as part of the budget process, each one of them will have their own strategic vision for their departments. Staff has also been doing some training. We do a number of it throughout the year, but we've taken a little bit more focus on things like implicit bias, just with the Black Lives Matter movement. Certainly, we're trying to spend a little bit more time focusing on some of those things. Also, Luke Paris sent me a text and asked me if I would update council about the permit software that they're going to be bringing forward at the next council meeting. Originally, that was budgeted at sixty thousand dollars. And the software, they're looking at thirty-eight thousand for the first year and then estimated for twelve thousand each year after. This is cloud-based software, and this has to do with all things, tracking, building permits, and information for the community development department. So he will bring you more info at the next meeting. And that's all I have. All right, thank you. I would just like to point out that the twenty twenty Norwalk Warrior baseball team is the state champs, which was awesome. We were not able to be at the game. I had my nephew had a wedding, but I would have liked to have been there, and it's it's great. We do want to recognize the baseball team and the basketball team in some fashion, but we are going to wait until we can meet in person. So I would say that probably during winter break, we're going to have the baseball team and the basketball team in here, because they were both state champions, and they need to be recognized and
It's a good idea.
Yeah. So
They'll all be at college.
What's that?
They'll all be at college.
That's why I say winter break. We gotta be back. So
Christmas break, yeah.
Yeah. And that's pretty much all I had. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All those of you who are right.
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 All those opposed, same. And we are adjourned at six fifty-five PM. Thank you.